Hi, I'm Ma.
Bill's jumping on now.
Okay.
Let me just shut my door.
So Jody, can you hear me? Alex had to attend to a family illness. He wants us to start. So I think for you as the vice chair, you should call us to order and proceed. I just got that text. And we all should mute if we're not speaking. So we have help with background noise. So if we could all mute other than, so Jody, will you?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. And will he be joining Bill or not?
In about 15 minutes, he said.
Okay, because I have to.
Technically, obviously technically, the board, once you're at quorum, and I think you've got, you may not have quorum yet, though, do you?
With Catherine, Maureen.
All right, great. Then you can proceed.
Okay, so this is Thursday, September 11th. A remarkably reminiscent look in the sky. And I want to call the board meeting to order.
So move. No, you don't have to vote.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So Jody, do you want, you want me to start into it then?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Okay, so it's a special meeting of the board. It's been handled virtually and the location of all of the board members is posted virtually. And this is per state requirements and laws on open meetings. So we're abiding by all of that. We have the necessary quorum. It's a single agenda. The meeting is posted. And it is for the board to review and vote on the recommended construction manager for the capital bond work and all three parts. There's an introductory memo, recommendation memo from Maureen Carvalho on top of the entire submission from the recommended group that is Triton. So I know Maureen, if you want to summarize that memo, introduce it, then we'll see if there are any questions from the board. And then we could proceed into what the, how the board wants to handle this. But we are recommending a rec, the vote on this affirmative today. I will say before Maureen steps in that I was part of this thorough review process. It included the entire proposal you now see. It included three interviews, all of which Joe, Maureen and I were part of. It included reference checks, even though we know Triton included reference checks by Maureen. We did have another group we were looking at very closely. I was handling the reference checks there. And then I crossed over to help with some of this. It's been a very thorough review. And it is quite an important appointment. They will be the linchpin as we proceed on all three parts of the capital bond. So, and we are recommend, Maureen will proceed in one minute, but I want to say we are strongly recommending Triton for this. And they will begin work immediately if approved. And on October 7th, they would come and present to you as a board, and that's a public meeting. So that's the village as to their work and the timeline, a lot of which you see on a Gantt chart in their materials. They would present on that a little more. Maureen?
Yes. So thank you, Bill. I think, as you said in the memo, we, you know, kind of went through the, not only what, can you hear me correct? Sorry, what the process brought to select this particular firm. As both that we did work together to really, we had multiple interviews with, with the different firms. We also did individual for each, each person that would be working on the project directly. We also wanted, because each of them are equally important, you know, even if the manager's great, the individual day to day. And really having, having, being able to get where they're currently working and really have that impact from, from the people who are actually working with them and their experience and all the rest. So the recommendation, I think summarizes that what we, the process we held there. And we did talk a little bit about it the other night. And as Bill said, the linchpin, doing it, because women are construction managers. I mean, obviously, every single person that's hired, the architects, the engineers, the contractors, they will, of course, ultimately work for the board as, you know, being hired by them. But the construction manager is your person who has the expertise to ensure that they're managing all of those folks for you. And because of the magnitude of the project, as you know, there are things, if it was under a certain amount, you know, we have a director of facilities that absolutely on smaller projects kind of manages the work. But if something of this and being with all the state compliance and testing and a lot of regulatory, you know, things that also have to be adhered to. These are folks that have that expertise in this field, in this market, in the K-12 market. There's a lot of construction managers, of course, and do work in, and these groups work across not only K-12, but of course, and you know, the residential and corporate and all the rest in New York City. But they do have an expertise in, in understanding the, the bill of the New York State Education Department, which is also extremely important. So all that to be said, you know, we, we had a, we did go through a process to ensure that we've worked with Triton previously. But even, even that being the case, each person, each team on the job is different. So it does have to go through the same process to ensure that all the people that are assigned to this, this job would be people that we feel could manage and be the right people for it. And then we also, just as far as on the dollars, we did mention, not only was it, it was below the pre-bond estimate for the work, but they were also the lowest bidder in this, in this scenario. So I didn't, I know we had mentioned that it was less than the, the budget, but it was actually the lowest of all them. And there were, are we having problems with our network?
Yeah. So what we need to do at R N is we'll just go into an audio. You'll hear us but not see us. And this is a recurring problem. We have to figure it out. But almost everything I have now, we have this problem. So let's go into an audio, not video. Go ahead.
Yeah. So that, that was the last piece I just wanted to mention that although with professional services, it doesn't necessarily have to be. They were in fact the low bidder as well. And the bids did range quite significantly, as you see tonight, you're, tonight, today. The, you're approving a contract for 1.176 with this recommendation. We, there was, one of the bidders was over $3 million. So just for the same scope. Now, you may say, well, is this the right number? And that's the piece in really working through. And some people, again, they work more in this market. Some people work in different markets. It's, you know, I would never disparage wherever people feel that, you know, it costs them to run the job, could be different based upon their company and with the people in the company get paid. But again, this is something you'll see in the materials. Not only the school districts we cited, they, they work in every school district. And, and that's, and they have repeat customers because people are happy with the, their overall work that they provide. So yeah, so, but again, it's still, you still have to go through a process because it will matter to the people that are, that are manned, that are put on this particular job and that, that of course, they get new personnel or different people you haven't experienced. So we needed to do our own interviews for those references. So that's, it takes a good amount of time to do that. But thank you. That's all I have to add.
So Maureen, I just want to thank you. You, you provided us with an extensive amount of material to read. Kind of amazing that you got it together since Tuesday night, but I think we all appreciate it. And I know for me, it was, and I'm sure for everyone, a pleasant surprise to see that their bid came in at under what we had budgeted. But I know that there, people may have some questions. There were some, I know Dave, you have some questions regarding around the budget stuff, which may have been answered. I don't know if other people have specific questions.
I think they both raised, Maureen and David both have their hand raised, Jody. So I think Maureen was first.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I echo my compliments to you, Maureen. And it was a lot of work to put this together. So appreciate that, the process. I guess a few questions, if I could. This was low price, technically acceptable?
Yes.
Best value. It was low price, technically acceptable. Okay.
Yeah. Looking all the bid requirements and making sure that everything was, you know, fully comparable to what was being, you know, asked. Yes. So it was.
Requirements. Got you.
Maureen, let me add to that. If you can hear me again, I'll, because I'll just be vocal, verbal, not visual. This includes, we were very thorough. In those three interviews, we met with three of the key team members who'll be here. So they're staffing up strongly for this with the right technical knowledge. And we have an experience with Triton. We've also said, based on that, we want to be very, very attentive as we proceed. So for this dollar value, we're confident we're getting strong technical and the right knowledge and also the right number of individuals.
Thank you. I imagine the price difference is because the higher ones had more people or specializations of some sort.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, every company is a bit different. I think that, you know, as far as the staffing model, some people may also add some additional folks and that that's how they, they approach the work, right? So, you know, there, that's, so it's not necessarily right. It may be that, you know, the, the job typically will call for a certain amount of staffing. And then they do have people in their firm that could provide additional expertise. So if there are things that come up in the field, that wouldn't necessarily be an extra. Some, some other companies may approach it where they put more people in the field or they have additional engineers that are staffed in a more daily way. But again, you know, the construction manager does make sure, but we do also have engineers and a team ourselves that are coming through land that although it's nice to have an extra set of eyes, we felt as though there was redundancy that although maybe a nice to have, like what Warren's spending, you know, that type of additional money. Because it's, they do still have the ability to have folks within their house of Triton, which has, you know, all different people who have different backgrounds in, in the, and the, and actually just, just to speak to it. I think it's in the materials, the gentleman that will be the onsite supervisor, he is a structural engineer by trade. And he was a bill, he had worked in, he's been a construction manager. He had worked in, as a structural, he's, he's still working as a structural engineer, but now with his specialty in construction management. He had seven years in his masters in structural engineering, working in the field of structural engineering solely before moving on to the construction management side of the house. So he was also, he has been a builder. He has expertise. So he was selected based upon the scope of work this time, when, you know, sometimes they'll look to match. So I think that that's why all, some of the other approaches may be a construction manager with a structural engineer. And you know, so that, that was the price differential may have been the, what they, the labor they were putting. And then some of it's just that their, their cost margins are higher, you know, they, they, they charge more like that. It's also a piece of it. Yeah.
Just a quick, in the summary, you give some sort of highlights on the reference check or things that, you know, kind of were highlighted as part of their resume or the interview process. But I didn't see anything on the project exec. Would you happen to have kind of highlights from the references? Because that's a really important position, kind of corralling everybody and coordination, all that good stuff. Like, reference check solid on that?
Yeah. So, so yes, so that, that's in terms of, well, and they also demonstrated examples of how they, their approach and what would be provided. And in like, what, you know, how they, I mean, I think they have a certain amount. They, that's like a company-wide, how they, how they provide reports and, and schedules. And, you know, that, those are provided both weekly and daily. So there is a weekly schedule and progress and budget report that is provided to the client. But then there's also daily kind of conversations or check-ins and, you know, as need be, right? And that, I would say that the managing of the, of the project and the reporting and the documentation was also something that people spoke to, it actually, in the references spoke to that, you know, about how, how they were very, that was actually something without even being asked that they spoke to.
So Maureen, I heard you asking about Kevin Sawyer in particular, correct?
Yeah, just if you had any additional kind of.
So Maureen and all can speak to this better, but this would be his third major engagement with us. So we have a lot of experience with Mr. Sawyer directly.
Yeah, I would say Kevin is right. So Kevin, because he is in this region, the project manager, I thought you just meant that the reports. I'm sorry, I was, I can't read reports in my brain. But he, he actually, even in, in speaking to my colleagues who were saying, you know, who are currently using Triton, who have, he was, actually, the day they came for the interview, he had just left Arslan, that was on his way to Irvington after he left us. So I mean, they, they all work with him, have a very long relationship with him. And many of these people also have worked in other districts, like some of my colleagues have worked in my place. So they've worked with Triton there in other districts as well. So he is the lead in this region. He is the partner in charge or the project manager, whatever is. Because he's also like a vice president of the company. So he is our, the, the person, and he does come to the meetings. And he is available to us. And that's what they, even in speaking to them, they said, oh, you're going through your process. I said, yeah, you know, we're interviewing this, you have a Kevin, Kevin, you know, you called, and I said, you know, I know that. But I, you know, that being said, we, it matters all the other people too, like Kevin's great, but it's going to matter how they're able to staff this job. And it's not about our, what we think about Kevin. That's one piece of equation. But the people who are here day in and day out are the most important, in my opinion. You know, he's important, but they are extremely important because you ever miss with them and it's going to, you have a real problem on your hands.
Okay. So I mean, just kind of good, good reviews is, is a thing I wanted. And my last.
I would say he is very highly regarded.
Okay. And my last question is, any, did you get any information on kind of how they manage the cost and like change orders and that kind of thing? Like is, you know, is that like a highlight that you could at least remember, you know?
Yeah, no, I would say one of pieces in which that they really, we were advised by like architects and everything else, especially the side, this larger bond amount, they have to be involved pre, pre-bid. They are, they need to do the page turns. They need to go through all the plans and documents before they're submitted to the state or definitely before they go to bid, meaning that, that by them being on earlier, you avoid the change orders later because they're, they're independently reviewing all the plans before they go to bid. And they, by, so you're getting corrections upfront that, that stop, like are preemptive to the change orders that will occur, right? So that part of what their service and the gentleman, John Hanson, who is the person who will be doing the pre-bond work in that, you know, that'll be his, his role with the estimator is to ensure that the document, as the design is developed, documentation and construction drawings are documented and is checking them. Because where the change orders come in are, are things that are not properly documented. And then the contractors look at them. They know you missed a bunch of things. They bid on it. Then they say, oh, by the way, you don't have what you're legally, you know, like this particular water fountain. Or it could be something as simple as that, you don't have a water fountain in an area where you need to legally have a water fountain. And here's the change order for it. So because the idea is sometimes you'll say, well, you're paying for, no, if it's part of the original bid, like usually you're paying for more on a change order. And so that, that's one thing. And, and as any construction manager, I'm sure, I think is, not that it's always the case, but that's why there is contingency construction and otherwise in, in the overall bid. Because there can be times, that's an unforeseen condition, unforeseen situation, which when we speak to them, A, the pre-bond effort is really important to minimize unnecessary change orders, I will call them, after. The second part is when things potentially could happen in a field that would be, something was done correctly and documented correctly, but something may change and needs to be addressed. And it's just what needs to occur, which happens. And they spoke to, they gave very tangible examples of those things, how then it was addressed and how they were able to address it with, you know, at times maybe using some of the contingency and, and other times finding cost-effective ways to modify it within the existing budget to get it done within the, without going into contingency. So they, they definitely spoke to that. That's a lot of what they do after, when the work begins, you know. And also making sure that the work is being done perspex, which is also very important, right? They're watching and making sure and ensuring that as things are, you know, even rebar, all the things, all the, all the inspections, all the, you know, necessary safety precautions. So yes, but they spoke really, that is one of the big, big aspects of a construction manager is to, to hope, like not only, you know, keep you in budget and ensure that they're finding ways. Because they, they, as builders, understand how it can be accomplished at a lesser cost or at a cost that's cost neutral potentially.
Thank you, Maureen. Appreciate it. David, I think, I think you had your hand up next.
Yeah, I, I just had, actually, Maureen, you asked all my questions. And in the process, Maureen, you answered all my questions and then some. I guess the one question I had additionally, and thank you so much for explaining everything, was just around Triton's history with sustainability. I know that obviously, certainly with the athletic fields, that's going to be a big consideration around materials and all that. I'm just curious to know more about how they work with sustainable practices, LEED, certified, et cetera, and kind of how they, they partner and kind of approach projects. I know that's going to be.
Let me, let me do a quick answer, then you can fill in again. So one of the strengths we're looking at with Triton is that they know this region very, very well. They know Hastings very, very well. So it's, it's a great question, David, and it's also a value question. They understand that Hastings in particular values deeply environmental sustainability issues. They know that's front and center on the fields. They have been working with Artsley on the installation of their fields. And that field that they've picked is one of the top options right now for an environmentally friendly solution. And they're managing that directly. And that also is done through a competitive bid. We will go to competitive bid. We're not going co-op on Prop 3 in the field. So there's going to be plenty of opportunity. And we'll talk about this on October 7th, if not on the 25th, probably now the 7th. Because we now don't want to get ahead of the construction management, if you approve it today. But that, that's a great question. I'm confident that Triton understands that value here. And we can press them on that value if we're worried.
So, so, you know, I'll just jump in. In ways, I'm just saying, this is from a construction manager standpoint. I think in Triton, again, like Bill said, I think, and in fairness, I think a lot of construction managers working not only in this region, but in this region, whereas Bill said it, they understand. And these are important things for many of our, not only for us, but for many school districts. I think what they do help, so as I said, coming in pre-construction, these are things when we say, hey, we, we want to see what green design choices could be made for the addition, right? They, they have an expertise in the construction field. So they can really help evaluate, you know, is the, is the A-trac system and the lighting and design choices, are they aligned with the district's, you know, desire to have, be as green of a building as possible, right? So in the building of that, they can also, again, we are in design, but the, the, within the bids themselves, there's the opportunity, like as an example, when we did hillsides, a small thing, but we did use green concrete to build the, the, using more sustainable materials. So they are absolutely able to, because they are in the construction world, help advise with sustainable material systems, which again, this is a brand new building. There's going to be, you know, heat, air conditioning, all the rest. So they're going to really help us and align those to our goals. They could also help during construction in terms of, you know, how do we best use energy and water conservation as you're building something or, or waste materials, ensuring, you know, that, you know, trying to, I hate to say like not to have waste, just general waste during a construction project that were, you know, material oversight, things that happen that, you know, you, you may have too many things that then go to waste and, you know, trying to really control the construction process. And then also they can help us to ensure that, once the things are installed, that they are being as efficient as possible. And I will say that we, you know, in this way, we're also benefiting from having architects, that that is a huge part of their work and how they approach things is to be sustainable in design and materials. So, but they could absolutely assist us in that as well.
You're good, David?
Thank you so much both of you. That, that was a great explanation. I appreciate it.
Teresa? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. I had this, sorry, I had the same question as David. And I just want to make sure that we really focus, put, put a big emphasis on this. With whomever we hire, our community is really depending on us being very committed to what we promised during the bond campaign. And I feel very responsible for making sure that these conversations are front and center.
Yeah. And, and the other thing I wanted to throw, sorry, I don't want to interrupt. But, you know, I think that, again, the construction manager, they say they do work ultimately for the board about, right? They're going to come in, they're going to be at the meeting. They're coming onboard pre, you know, of course, we're in, you know, earlier design phases. These are things in which, when they come to meet with you and go over things, these are things in which, you know, the board can, this is their job to, these are the things in which, you know, with the field, we'll speak about the field, as Bill said, they're working similarly in Artsley, have the same desire to use certain materials. They are your people, you know, to ensure that being put in those bids, documents that are going out, aligned with what, you know, the community expectation is of what is being in those bid documents. They have the, you know, they, they're also like your, is this, because they're not, they're the ones checking them, right? So they're not the ones developed, they're the ones on top of it to say, is this in fact, what, what it needs to say? Is it tight enough? Is it with all the level of detail to ensure that that's what we're receiving and that's what we're getting? Then they're, what, then they're on the other side, what, ensuring that that's what you're getting when it's brought here, you know? So it's pre-bond, ensuring things are the way they need to have that level. And that's where you'll have the opportunity, if they're hired to, when they come to the meeting, to report out to you, to, you know, give them and ensure that they understand that from the, right? I mean, we explain that to them as well, but I think it's also the board, you give them the direction and, you know, that they, they work for you ultimately. So.
Let me, let me add one thing here. The, and this is when it went on in the interviews, there were three again for Triton. There were several for the other group. We were, I'm going to be blunt, we were pressing them eye to eye, nose to nose in the office and the desk behind me, table behind me, on this exact issue, how will you manage and coordinate with us? Because part of it is that they, an incredibly complex three-part bond, they're the ones linking it all together and then communicating to us as administration, where are we on a very, on a daily basis? And then on a less than, but regular basis. And then on a less than, but regular basis to the board, where are we? And to be in those discussions around any of these substantive, technical and high-level value questions. They also can say, we know you need and want that. Here are some of the challenges to get to whatever that is. So instead of having the discussion with 15 different vendors or trades, you're having it with the construction manager who becomes the point. So they can then make sure that we're doing what we can, but if there's some challenges delivering on that, they can say, hey, that could be a challenge. Let's talk through how to solve that problem. So you get to the value you want. A big aspect of this, very important, there's going to be a competitive bid process on Prop three for the fields. Um, and then that's a place where there's definite criteria put out, there's a definite review process. So that's a key place to check in on this. I would also add, if you saw on the cover memo, that the assistant construction manager will be joining us from Croton on, on Hudson, where they've just put in an artificial field and they had to work there with a big uh set of concerns in that community about environmental issues. So they're coming to us knowing, particularly in the field end of things, environmental health, student health is, is a high priority.
Excuse me, I have to leave. Will somebody else, can someone else take over his chair?
Do you want to do your vote first, Jody? And then I don't know, if you're ready to vote or no, I don't know. Do you have enough people to vote? Oh, you do without you.
Okay. I'm just wondering if anybody has any other questions or things before we vote.
Do we have a public comment first?
Public comments later in the agenda. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, I'm having very bad computer issues, but I think I solved them. So, sorry.
Okay, Alex, it's up to you now to take over. We're just about to vote.
Okay, I have to.
I'm going to turn it over to you and I'm going to actually have to exit.
Okay.
I have a 12:30 appointment.
Okay. Um, let me just open, I had board docs open, I had to close it. Let me just open board doc really fast.
Um, while Alex is doing it, before we end the meeting formally, I would like to do a moment of silence in regards to nine eleven. So we will do a moment of silence at the end of this meeting for nine eleven.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Okay, I'm going to have to go. So I guess I don't vote.
Thank you, Jody.
Yep, sorry, yep, okay. Bye bye.
See you. So if we're at the, at the, I'm sorry?
No, please proceed. We're still in the, you were doing the vote before we go to public comment.
Okay. So, okay, so let me just see the order here. All right. So is there a motion to approve our business item, which is the recommendation to award the RFP for construction manager services to Triton Construction Management?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Uh, we're going to move ahead to public comment. Melissa, you can, you can operate public comment from your end, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Um. Hold on. Let me figure out how to um, un- Let's see. I think I can. Who? Is everybody muted?
Yes, they can just unmute.
It looks like there's a queue.
Yeah, I, I see Laura, Laura Stan Boyd. Can you unmute yourself to speak? I was trying to unmute you.
Oh, yes, of course. Can you hear me? Hi. Um, my name is Laura Boyd. I joined very spontaneously. I kind of noticed this was happening, but I, I had a suggestion. I was going to suggest to my friend Catherine Di Martino. Um, simply because we are friendly uh and, as well as Maureen Santana. There's a um, there's a crossing guard at the five corners who we are friendly with. I see her um every day. Her name is Maybelline. Um, in conversation, uh, she's very proud that she will be celebrating her 25th anniversary with Hastings as a crossing guard on October 8th. And I would like to suggest that we do something for her. I know it would be, it would mean the world to her. She's very proud of this job. Um, always has a smile on her face. If it was something as simple as on that day, we have like a big, like two, five balloons and um, maybe a card and a gift certificate or something. Um, I think it would just go a long way. And she is just the sweetest person. She takes care of all of our kids. Um, and she's been doing it for two and a half decades. So that, I don't know if this is the forum, but I would like to suggest that.
I wanted to say that is very nice and I'll coordinate with the village. That, she actually works for the village. Some of the crossing guards work for us, but I will reach out to Dave Dosen just to talk about it because he oversee, like we kind of like mix and match her. They're all, but they all serve our students. So thank you. That's very kind. They do a great job.
Great. So, so what would be the next, how can I keep in touch and follow up and help?
You can maybe email me directly and I'll, I'll reach out to Dave. I didn't want to jump in. I just wanted to clarify for everybody that, because there are some crossing guards that work for the district and some don't. But, but you can email me about it.
Okay. Thank you very much, Maureen. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, Lisa, you have, Ms. Lippman, you have your hand up? Can you unmute yourself?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Oh, terrific. Um, I'm Lisa Lippman. I live in Hastings. And as a former member of your board, let me just start by thanking all of you for all the work you do and showing up on a beautiful day at noon on about what, 24 hours notice. Um, with that, I, my, my comments are centered around the Farragut wing and the insurance funds. Since the flood happened on Christmas Eve, um, we've been told that you've been working with the insurance company. And we've heard that Farragut would be fully open on a number of different days. I know we were told last spring that it would be open on the first day of school. Maybe you'd have some punch list work. In August, we were told that sadly you wouldn't be open on day one, but you'd be open in early fall. That's October. Then I think in the last dispatch, Dr. McCursie told them that it would be a, I think your words, Dr. McCursie, were a good few months. But as we know, while work has been done, and thank you to all who have, so much more remains. There are no walls. There are contractors yet to be hired. I don't see RFPs for this, but maybe you don't need them. I don't know. So many of us in the community are wondering why there aren't walls yet and why we haven't seen floor plans, why we haven't seen full presentations on funding. I think what started was last, maybe March, trustee Lennon Santana made a, a statement to the dispatch. That was concerning. She said, you don't, y'all divided the bond into three parts to ensure passage because now I think if I quote you wrong, trustee Lennon Santana, you can fix, you can fix it, but I think your words to the paper were approve funding to the contractors for the flood. So what's happened is the rumor mill is going wild. People are saying they're not doing work, maybe electrical, but they're going to have to sue the insurance company. So I'm here to asking you to end the rumor mill. And the only way to end it is by telling us what's going on. So I'm going to ask, could you please give a full presentation on the flooded wing? And tell us with numbers, what money has come in? And what hasn't? How much is needed? I mean, I, I'm not a construction worker, but I did do construction litigation for a number of years and I don't know, I'm guessing between 10 and 20 million. I don't know. Are you going to need to sue? Will you be declaring a loss? I would ask, I think the most opportune time for this presentation would be at your October 7th meeting, when your external auditor comes. I'm sure this must be a focus of the audit of how much money is coming in and how much goes going out and will this be a loss? So again, I'm here as, as somebody who cares so deeply about our district, as you know. And the rumors are ugly. And I'm asking you as the leaders of our school to please just put the numbers out there. And if there is a loss, let's work together and find a way to pay for it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa.
Okay, um, Louis, Louise Mullin?
Yeah, hello. Hi, thanks for uh allowing me to speak just two minutes, um, even less. Um, first of all, thanks to the board for all your hard work and due diligence in trying to find someone who's really good for the job. Um, I'm here today uh because I'm worried about the environmental impacts of this massive um, construction project and obviously about the turf fields as well and the public health um implications of putting in plastic carpet. Um, but what I feel is heartening about what I've just heard is that the board really care about public interest and that they're willing to hold the contractor's feet to the fire and to uphold the promises that were made to the community. Um, I think a lot of parents are really worried about um, their kids playing on artificial turf for a number of reasons, some of them being it's really hot, so there are PFAS and microplastics and I don't think these are unfounded worries. And both my kids play um field sports. This will directly impact our family. Um, and I'm glad to see that you guys are worried in equal measure, it seems. Um, on a positive note, um, I think it's an amazing opportunity to construct a building that's an example of a fantastic, well-thought-through environmental project. Um, I don't know if you guys are aware, but you have a pretty massive population of chimney swifts that nest on the top of the building and they're, they're actually experiencing increasing issues with habitat loss. So, you know, considering, considering them would also be a, a great thing to do in this project, perhaps by not capping chimneys or providing alternative habitat on the roof. And then other, other issues like considering bird-safe glass, so the big atrium doesn't create a lot of bird death. It's like it'd be awful for kids to walk into school and see lots of small birds that have perished that way. Um, so anyway, a couple of suggestions. I know this might not be the best forum for this because we'll have multiple opportunities to comment. But overall, I'm really, I'm really, I feel fortified that you're harder than the right place and that you want to do the best by the district. So I thank you for that. Cheers.
Thank you. Thank you, Louise.
Um, I think that's all. I don't see any other hands up. Did anybody else want to make a public comment?
No? Okay. So I'll just open up. I know I missed a lot of the back and forth. My apologies, but I'll open up for board comments.
Let's just make sure we close with a moment of silence where you remember that. Next, Alex.
For sure. Any board comments now? Well, following Dr. McCursie's lead, uh, today is nine eleven, 24 years. I had two friends who I lost in it and I think it's I'm sure a lot of us have connections to people. So I think it's very appropriate. We're taking a moment of silence to think about and reflect on that. Thank you all. Uh, is there a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.